The first order of business. Tom hasn't joined, has he? Okay, first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda from last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
A second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? The motion has been made and carried. The minutes from the last planning commission meeting are approved. We are going to postpone the.
That was the agenda. You're gonna do the minutes.
We just did the, yeah, I was just gonna do the agenda. We just did the minutes, but I'm gonna go ahead and do the agenda, okay? Do we have any, do anybody have any comments on the agenda you'd like to make? Pardon me, do you have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the motion carries, so the agenda and the minutes have been approved. And the approval of minutes was for the May sixteenth meeting. I think I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this point, and if we need to, we'll do the oath. And the. When, when Tom joins, joins. So that we're having one public hearing tonight. And that's a recommendation on an ordinance for a variance. To the limitation on the location of accessory structures. In the RL rural district. That's per the. UDC section seven three eight to allow an accessory structure. In the first layer, and this is for a location, residents at fifty-four fifty-one Two Hills Drive. In the estates of Cedar Grove. So the public hearing is now open. We're gonna start, I'm gonna call for staff presentation initially on this, so Mr. Morton, if you could give us a presentation on this proposal?
Okay, thank you, I'd be happy to. This is property at five four five one Two Hills Drive, and the estates at Cedar Grove is zoned RL rural. This particular lot is at the very back, it's the last lot on the main entrance road. It has a frontage on the main road, and then the main road, Two Hills Drive curves around and also follows what would be the right, the right side property line. Because of the way we define layers. In the code, both the front of the house and the right side would be considered the first layer. The house was actually permitted and built by Jeff Lindsay Communities, which is building all the houses in there, they, the ones selling the lots and building all the houses. And this one was sighted and built by them. The house is way over on the left side of the lot. Leaving really just the front. And, and the right side, and some, some land in the back available as remaining space if anything else is to be done. When that building permit application came in. It showed a site for a future garage in the location where the applicants are proposing it. The reviewer who reviewed it for the city did not bring to their attention that a future garage would not be allowed there. Which is something we would normally do. But the applicants purchased the house from the, from the builder. Not knowing that this future site was going to be a problem, and then applied for a building permit. Learned that that's the first layer, and that's a problem, so now we have the variance application. And that's, those are kind of the basics.
Thank you. Robbie is the applicant on Zoom? If the applicant would like to make a comments, I would say presentation, but comments. This would be the time to do so, and then we will open up for public comments.
Okay, thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, if you'd identify yourself by name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Angela Addison. My address is fifty-four fifty-one Two Hills Drive. Fabring, Georgia, three zero two one three. We reside on lot twenty-three. And we are seeking a variance for the detached garage in the estates at Cedar Grove. While the garage could have been completed during the construction of our home. We opted to do it ourselves after purchasing our homes so as not to add to the final cost of, of the home. To reassure that the garage would not interfere with the location of the septic tank. The builder added the placement of a future detached garage to the site plan, which was approved, the site plan was approved by the city of Chattahoochee Hills. The proposed location is critical as the septic primary and reserve field is in the rear of the house. And will not allow detached garage in that location. Subsequently, the proposed location was approved with Fulton County Environmental Health. The proposed location of garage is within compliance of the zoning requirements as it. Falls within the approved county setback requirements, does not block the view of any vehicle despite the lot being on a curved road. Will sit adjacent to the rear corner of the primary structure, which is several feet below the surface of the street. And beyond the curved portion of the lot, and does not present an aesthetic problem for any of the homeowners near our property. We believe that this information and some of the pictures provided to you. Will, is it grounds for there to be a variance given for this ordinance, and we just appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move now to public comments. If you desire to speak in favor of or in opposition to this particular item. You must fill out a public comment card and turn it into. Mr. Morton, who's standing in for the city clerk. Tonight. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received. All speakers, when you come to the podium, should identify themselves. By name, address, and if you're part of an organization, the organization. Before beginning the presentation. In this case, each speaker will have three minutes to present their comments. The, Mr. Morton is going to keep track of time and will inform you when your lot of time is expired. Those speaking in support of the application are going to speak first, allowed to speak first. Those opposing the issue will speak next. Ma'am, if you wish to make a public comment, you should fill out a card and hand it to Mr. Morton. All right, you bet. Again, those speaking in support of the application will speak first, those opposing will speak next. Speakers shall address all remarks to the planning commission. And during the public hearing, members of the planning commission commission shall listen to the presentations made by all those who speak. No action or comment on that part is in order until the chairman. Just declares the public hearing to be closed. So we'll now begin. Mr. Morton, do you have? How many cards you have?
I have one card, it's in support.
In support? Then please, let's begin.
Okay. Mr. Campbell? This is Lawrence Campbell.
My name is Saint Lawrence Campbell, I'm a wife, Dr. Campbell, and we live at fifty-four. Fifty-four fifty-nine Two Hills Drive.
Is Robbie, is his speaker, is his a?
Yeah, it's on.
Is the mic on? Okay.
We live at fifty-four fifty-nine Two Hills Drive. The Addisons are our neighbor, immediately next door, and we fully support what they're doing. We have. No clue as to why we're even here. We do support, you know, the building of the garage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Mr. Morton?
No, I don't have any more. Oh, one's coming. Assistant support. Great, thanks.
Please go ahead.
This is Jonell Coley, also in support.
Correct, so I live at three five six Lower Court, new to the neighborhood, and I just wanted to come and support and say fully supporting the addition to their house.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Morton, were there any written comments that were received?
No.
Okay. Well, at this point, I think we will close the public comment period of this hearing, and then we'll move to discussion among the council, of commission members, excuse me.
Quick question on the Zoom?
Yes. Hi, this is.
Jonas Ware, I'm also wanted to make a public comment. As far as the Addisons.
And then what is your name, sir, and your address?
My name is Jonas Ware. I am a broker. I was actually involved in the transaction of the purchase of the home.
And where do you live?
I live in, actually in the city of Atlanta. I'm in Fulton County, but I was the broker. And I facilitated the purchase of the home for the Addisons.
Are you speaking in favor of the proposal or in opposition? Mr. Ware, do we still have you?
Yes, yes, sir.
Are you, are you speaking in favor of the proposal or in opposition to it?
I am also speaking in favor of the proposal.
And then please proceed.
Yes, I would just also like to stand in support of the Addisons and having this proposal accepted. Along with the. Comments that the Addison provided. The builder also had this. Structure in the plans when we went through with the purchase of the property, so. I just wanted to also stand in support of the Addison. For the approval of the structure.
Mr. Ware, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, is there another comment?
Yes, there is. This is, this is Maurice Daniel. I'm at fifty-four sixty-four. Two Hills Drive, I'm also neighbor of the Addison, and just wanna say I'm in. Support of the structure being built as well.
And what was your name, sir?
Maurice Daniel.
Thank you.
Five four six four Two Hills Drive.
And you're in favor, is that the extent of your comment?
Yes, sir, in favor of the, of the. Auto garage being built, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We, we often do not mix Zoom and public comment periods, but we're making an exception tonight. We'd like to hear from the public, so this is good. At this point, I think we're going to close, I don't think, I'm gonna close the public comment period of this hearing, and we're gonna move to discussion. So the public comment period is closed. Robbie has Mike, has Tom joined yet? Okay. Have you heard back from him at all? Okay. Well, let's, let's proceed, gentlemen, I'm sorry you can't, but I think we can be flexible enough. If you have comments you wanna raise, you can. But you're not officially on the commission yet, so, all right. So let's start with discussion. Do you all have initial comments, or would you like me to start? And, and Ms. Ms. Addison, we may ask for some quest clarification. From your standpoint too, but we'll ask that directly of you. Mr. Morton, does this house already have a garage?
It does.
Is it a three-car garage?
Yes, that's right, a, a single car garage and a two-car garage, yeah.
Yeah, and is there, and the, the proposed use is for a garage?
That's correct.
One car, two car, what is it? Do we know? Ms. Addison? Are you still?
Yes, yes, I am.
What size, was this for a two-car garage?
Two-car garage, yes, sir.
Okay, and the use is for vehicular garage, garaging, and that's it, right?
Yeah, but also, it's also gonna be a flex space for my husband. So workspace, it's gonna be a workspace for my husband as well.
And what kind of work would we be talking about?
For his yard equipment. And, you know, gardening and things of that nature.
This is strictly, this, this is not a business oriented, correct?
Oh, no, 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 not a business, not business oriented at all, no, sir.
All right. Mike, it looks like topographically. Part of this garage may be screened from at least one of the roads, is that correct? There was a picture of a topographic feature that seemed to screen part of it?
It's, it's fairly flat, the, the last couple of pictures, I took these last couple of pictures. And it's, it's pretty easy to, the yard's pretty flat, it's not really, it's not really screened.
Okay, fair enough. There was one picture in there that showed a, a, a neighbor house, about half of it not visible, but. That, I think that actually matches my impression of it as well. Who constructed the pad? There's an existing pad there, correct? For the garage?
Yes.
Who built that? Who installed the pad?
That was poured by Macario, he's a landscaper, and his uncle's construction company.
And when did that occur?
That occurred. I'm gonna say March.
Of, of this year?
Yes.
So, okay, so it wasn't poured during the initial construction. It was just poured recently, and that was before a building permit was issued.
Well, we were under the understanding because we actually had the builder to come out. To give us a quote on what the garage would cost if we did it, you know, with his contractor. And that's where he said that it should go according to the site plan, so we were aware of where it should go because the site plan was given to us. Initially, upon, you know, purchasing, and then we also got the site plan again when we were ready to move forward building our detached garage, so we really thought that. Because the site plan had been approved, that, that pad had been approved as well, that location had been approved.
And then when did you find out that it, you needed a building permit for it?
We found out we needed a building permit. When we started reaching out to Sandy, but we were under the impression that it would be permitted. Because we just thought it had already been permitted, we just going through the formalities, since the site plan had already been given. So we were going through formalities. It was only until. May, I believe, and my husband has all the correspondence, but it was only until May that we recognized that. The location of the proposed detached garage would, was in violation of an ordinance.
Mr. Morton, the site plan, you included one in the materials, and was that the site plan we're talking about?
Yes.
Was approved and reviewed by staff, a person in staff. And, but that was just the site plan, that wasn't. That wasn't the building permit, of course.
Correct, that would have been for the, for the original home, for the, the main.
The original home, right, and, but it does, as you point out, it does depict.
It does say future, it says future, or foot garage, yeah. Oh, it does say future, yeah, future twenty-five, four by twenty-four gar. Garage.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I've been talking a lot here, do you, Christine, or?
I have questions for Mike.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It does stay in here that. The proposed garage will be consistent with the, the structure. Can you hear, hello?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, so it says that the proposed garage will have the same architectural features as the home, as like far as siding. But that's kind of, it draws a line, does the HOA have any saying about structures?
Don't know, I don't know whether HOA would review that or not. This was something they could have had. The, the original build, the builder of the main home, apply and, and, and do, of course, they would have. At least on this schedule with this reviewer, would have run into the same issue. But this is not by them, I believe this is a kit garage, so it's, what I've seen has siding. They're talking about the same paint, but it's some of the other elements you see on the house, like the wooden, the wooden details at the. At the peak of the gable, I don't believe are planned to be a, a part of the proposed garage.
Do you have images of the proposed kits?
I don't, if it's not in the package, no, no.
I did submit an image, it was computer generated image. I can see if that's something I can populate onto the screen. But the contractor that we're using. The siding will be concrete siding as is used with the home, it will have the. Same paint color. The garage door would be black as, as, as what we currently have on our garages. The only thing that would be missing would be the, the starburst. That is seen on the front of the house, but there is no starburst or wooden gable above, above the other garages, so it'll be consistent with the other garages.
And what about the roofing material?
The roofing material will be the same as well.
And, and the roof pitch will be similar to some of the images that you've shown us in the neighborhood? I mean, you're, you're trying to really match the house, even though it's called a kit, correct?
Yes, we are trying to match the, the home.
I think specifically you were talking about the pitch of the roof. That's right. Right?
How steep it is.
Yeah. Ms. Addison, do you know the answer to that?
I'm going to have to look through. My paperwork, my other paperwork that I gave you, because it's not in the. Package that you put together, so let, just give me a moment to check that out, please.
Do you have other questions?
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm inclined to make a motion if she can produce an image or an elevation of this. That we recommended to council for their approval. If you don't mind, I've got. You back up. Yeah, I've got a couple of things as well, I wanna, I wanna ask about here. Mike, it, when, when this sort of variance comes before the planning commission. We have a half a, the, the code sets forth half dozen criteria. That must be met. It's not balancing act, it's not a, it's not, it's, it's nothing else, you've got to meet each one of the criteria. And Mr. Morton, if I'm not mistaken, you have some trouble with them meeting the first criteria. Is that correct?
Correct.
You want to describe that a little bit?
Let me refer to the language.
It's the extraordinary, and, and go ahead.
Right. That's right, so the first. The first of the criteria is there are ordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular property. It's a, it's basically a corner, happens to be the same road that is on the front and the side. But it's, it would be the same if it were an intersection, a corner, right? Corners are a common condition. But it's that corner that creates the. The condition that the first layer is both in front of the house and beside the house. It's, it's, it's hard to say that that is extraordinary. In fact, the layer diagram in, used in the zoning shows a corner lot and how the layers are intended to be enforced on a corner lot. And it's, it's, it's clear that that, that both, both of the sides are the front layer.
Right, right, that was pretty clear.
That's right.
And so it is encroaching in the first layer. Okay. But the key point on that first, the first criteria of the variance that has to be met is whether or not it's. A unique, we'll just say that.
That's right.
And there isn't much unique about just being a corner property, right?
Yes.
So. The, another question I have, this is phase one of Cedar Grove Estates.
Correct.
Which has a different history, correct?
That's correct.
I mean.
It was platted, well, sorry, it was laid out.
Fulton County.
That's right.
Original, so it's grandfathered in.
That's correct, that's correct. It was, that's right, that's correct.
Yeah, and so this is, this is a very unique part of. The city, there weren't many of these, and this was the last one I think that we expect to see was Cedar Grove one, and. We've seen Cedar Grove phase two, and part of the phase two conditions was an increased amount of off-site. Open space that was allowed.
That's correct.
And some of that open space was to be in phase one.
That's correct.
Does this? Touch that at all? Is any of this part of that open space?
Not the off-site open space, but the back of this lot will be the, a part of the onsite open space in phase two.
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is that, is that somehow this, we're impacting that calculation about the off-site. Because it was supposed to not just be off-site, it was gonna be off-site at individual houses in phase one.
It's not, it was, they replatted phase one. And each of the lots around the perimeter, well, on the, the east and west. Were reduced because the county had asked them to extend those lot lines all the way back to the edge of the development. And because of the phase two approval, they pulled those lot lines in, those lots are all now. Smaller than they would have been if approved by Fulton County, and that open space is. It's not really shown here well.
No, it wasn't, but, but I'd be surprised if it was.
As an exhibit, but the eastern and western boundaries of the phase, of phase one include open space on both sides.
And this doesn't have anything, it doesn't impact that at all.
That's correct.
This particular garage variance. I didn't expect so, but just wanted to check because of the adjacent open space.
Yeah, I don't think it has any impact on the.
So I, I guess as a courtesy to our prospective new. Commission members, are there any questions, Will or John, or Charles, that like to ask at this point?
Can you hear me? This is Mitchell Wolf.
Yeah, I would, Mitchell, I was gonna ask if you did too, so, but let me see, Will or John, or? Do you have anything you'd like to ask at this point?
Well, you guys actually touched on a few things that. I saw of interest, number one, an HOA, right, because it obviously is a subdivision. And, but by the looks of it, it looks like there are. There's at least another property in there with a similar garage, right, a similar setup. I'm assuming that it would be approved by the HOA. The other thing that was notable to me is that it is a subdivision in Chattahoochee Hills, which is. Obviously rare, and as you've already mentioned, replanned in some sense. And then also kind of just thinking a little further past it, it. I know the. The garage, the proposed site is in the first layer. Because it's on a corner, but it's. If that corner didn't exist, it would actually be in the second layer, right? Like if that road did not curve around the side, it would actually just be in the second layer, right?
That's correct.
So, I mean aesthetically, it would look appropriate where it's going, is that right?
That's, that's.
Those are the comments that I saw notable.
Appreciate it, John, again, we're, these are, these are a courtesy to our pending. Members. Will, from your standpoint, Mitchell, I'm coming to you next.
Okay.
No, thanks, I'll wait.
Okay, Mitchell, you, your comments, please?
Yes, I wanted to go back to. When this all started with the builder, the builder did plans and submitted it to the. The town, I call it the town, to get approval. And on the plans that were submitted, where he got approval to build. Was this? Addition included in the original plans? In other words, were the plans that were approved, did it have a future garage on the plans?
Mr. Morton, would you like to?
So, yes, the plan that was submitted with the original house did include this. This site noted as future garage. It's, it's, so the city should have brought it to the applicant's attention, the builder's attention at the time that that, that would not be allowed.
Site plan we're talking.
And, that's correct. It's not uncommon for the city to receive a site plan with multiple structures and, and features that don't need permits. Even sometimes, the permit itself is very clear. That what's been approved is the, the main house, so the permit itself did not. It didn't come with a formal approval of, of the site plan, everything on the site plan. It really was only an approval of the house. I can certainly understand how the, the applicant, who wasn't our applicant tonight, but I can certainly understand how that applicant might have felt. Without other comment coming, that there was an implicit approval of that.
I didn't understand what you just said about not the applicant tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, our applicant tonight wasn't the applicant for the home when it was constructed.
Oh, okay.
Right, 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 but I can understand how that party may have interpreted silence. As implicit approval of, of, of the, the plan as submitted.
All these roads, Mr. Morton, are internal to phase one. And this garage would not be visible from the public thoroughfares, correct?
So i- in phase one, those are public thoroughfares.
Well, yeah, correct, I meant, I meant Cedar Grove.
But that's right, Cedar Grove and the other road, that's correct, not, not near.
Should have been clearer, yeah, okay.
Okay, so now let me just continue, so. The builder gets back a set of approved plans. And, you know, it's stamped, approved, you know, I don't know how you do it here, I'm fairly new to the area, but it's, you know, there's a stamp and it says approved. And on those plans that the builder built. Was this garage included in those plans? If, do you know?
So I'm, sorry, I'm not sure I caught all that.
Let me just say it again, the, the builder submits the plans for building permit approval.
Yes.
They get back a set of plans that are stamped, approved by the town of Chattahoochee Hills. And then, and then they go and build the house.
Right, the building permit review, and I have to say that I did not go back and review the, the safe-built. Permit, plan review document. Generally speaking, again, I can't speak to this one specifically, generally when they receive plans with multiple documents, the review is clear. That it's for the one building only. They have to, they would have to pull multiple permits. To build multiple buildings, and so it's clear in the plan review document that this is for the one building only. But the site plan probably does have a stamp on it that says, probably, well, we'll just say reviewed, but. It, it would have that stamp on it from. From the building code reviewers.
Where, where I was going with all this is that. I can, you know, I just don't think it's fair. To the Addisons, that if, you know, they may have thought this was approved because. It hadn't not been approved, and if it was on the plan, I certainly would have thought it was approved. And probably was a surprise. I did actually go and take a look at the, the site, and there are very attractive homes there, and they're very well-maintained. Um, I did actually go and take a look at the, the site and there are very attractive homes there and they're very well maintained. I think it's important that whatever they add is consistent with the architectural. I mean, the, the house is a little bit different. It's very nice. And it should match somewhat. And, um, if they could put up some, you know, just a little bit of landscaping around it, cause it is visible. Everything is visible there. Um, I was kind of surprised at how few trees there were, but the houses are attractive. And, um, but you can see it. And I, I wouldn't want to, uh, penalize the Addisons because I could see how they would have thought. You know, maybe they, maybe this was an important part of why they bought the house because then Mr. Addison could use it for, to say he could store his equipment. So, um, that, that's where.
Hmm, hmm. I'm, I'm, uh, very sympathetic to that. Um.
Mi- Mitchell, is that, uh, is that it for your comments?
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When was the initial house built? When, when was that permit issued? How long has it been? Because once a permit is issued and you get substantial completion and all that, that, that building window closes, so this would be a new permit at some point.
That's right.
If you go back later.
That's right. That's right. So the, the no garage would have, right, they would have, would have required separate permits from, from the beginning. Um, the house was both, so in my notes here, I don't have the months, but the house was both permitted and completed in 2023. So it would have been early 23. Um.
Thank you. Um, further discussion? Um, I will, I will make. Hey, Mike. Robbie, Robbie, I think, I think we're done with comments from Zoom.
Doug.
Thank you. Um, Tom, I know you're, I know you're on. We're gonna go ahead and finish the public, uh, hearing.
Sorry.
To the oaths. Okay?
You go ahead. Sorry. Yep.
Yep. Um, he, he, look, I think this is a, I think the, one of the unique aspects of this is it's Phase One. And we aren't going to see more Phase One. And it's had a kind of a troubled, troubled is the wrong word, a complex history.
Yes.
It's had a complex history. Um, I, I think that the, there was apparent reliance on that site plan. Um, I'm not sure the city is obligated, staff is obligated to point out things that are on there that, that have not been permitted yet. Um, and that that really comes to the fore and we count on that coming to the fore in the permitting process. Uh, clearly there was a mistake made in pouring the foundation without a permit. Um, but again, I, I, I think that we have enough with the Phase One grandfathering in there to the, to make this a fairly isolated and unique, um, variance request. Um, that's, that's it on my comment.
Hey, could you just clarify the first layer? What is that dimension? I mean, this is sixty, they're saying sixty-six feet.
It's based on the location of the home. So it's.
The facade to the.
It, that's right. From the facade to.
If this had an awning connected to the home, it would not, it had a, some connectivity, it wouldn't be.
That's, that's correct. It would be one structure, it would be, it would be okay.
It's a, it's a small technical issue.
That's right. We, we presented when they came to us, um, uh, and we told them that it was, uh, not uh, approvable by staff where located, we gave them the three options, um, connect it to the house, move it to truly out of the first layer, which is their septic field or an area with trees. We really don't want the cutting down for the trees or attach it to the, to the, or the variance, like whichever one.
I, I do think the HOA point is a really important point. I think, uh, e- even Ms. Addison said the aesthetic uh, matching with the, with the area is important. And it sounds like that's the intention, but I'm not sure we have enough confidence of that at this point without more. So.
I think I'd like to resubmit my motion.
Yeah.
At this point, I, I think, um, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that we, we approve this, um, accessory structure under the following condition, that, um, that, that it meets the approval of, of the city council and that some, um, design intent is shown, maybe with the primary, the two elevations that face the streets with some notes.
For, for whose review?
Uh, for, for.
City Council.
City Council.
Council's review. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they can make the final approval, but I'd like to recommend that we pass it with those two, that condition.
Okay. There were two staff recommended conditions in here.
With those two as well.
Yeah, I consider. Okay.
And I think, didn't Mitchell, did Mitchell have a recommendation as well for a condition? Uh, Robbie, would you, uh?
I think you mentioned landscape.
See if, uh, Mi- Mitchell can be hooked in again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Do you have a suggestion on a condition?
No, no suggestion on a condition, but I buttress what was just said, that, um, it should be consistent with what's there. So, um, it kind of blends in.
Okay.
So, consistent, when we say consistent, do we, we wanted to find that further. Um, they've talked about siding and paint. Um, I heard roof materials and roof pitch.
Not, the roof pitch is fine. I can see up there that she says eight and a half by twelve. Yeah.
But that needs to be.
Yeah.
You want to put that. That can be articulated with notes on the, on the two elevations.
Right.
They can.
Right, right. But those are particular, um, particular elements that you'd like to see in, in the condition or?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's, uh, let's restate the.
Why do you restate where I said something turned?
Uh, you are recommending, if I'm correct, approval of the application for a variance with the following conditions to be included with the materials presented to the city council for their review. Um, the two conditions that staff has recommended. And then why don't you state the condition that you.
And the, the two primary elevations that are street facing with annotation provided for the materiality, the roof pitch and the, any, anything else relative to the design.
And I'd like to amend that to the satisfaction of staff. Um, do you have anything, um, you would like to add as well? All right. Mike, do you have enough there? Do you, can you read it back?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Um, so the, I'll read the staff recommendations and I may, um, recommend just amending one of those to carry some of this. Um, the first of the garage structure must be consistent with plans submitted to the Department of Community Development. That includes the location. Um, um, and then the second one is that the structure must be consistent with the main house and design materials and colors. Um, I would, I would recommend, um, uh, so adding a separate condition that, um, uh, two elevations annotated to the two street facing elevations be provided in the materials for city council. Um, and then in that, uh, uh, mention of, um, design materials and colors, uh, more specificity to, to include, um, siding, uh, paint, that's colors, uh, roof materials and roof pitch. Is that?
Sounds.
And those should all be annotated in the, um, in the, on the elevation.
I'm sorry to interrupt your motion. Do you have anything else you would suggest in that, Mike?
No.
Okay. Gentlemen, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Um, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion, right? Can, any?
Just a point of order. Just a point of order from the mayor before everybody votes. Uh, if you want the votes for the new folks, I need to swear them before they do that.
Yeah, they're not voting yet, Mike.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
They're not voting. Just wanted to be sure. Now, we're gonna keep the three current, uh, uh, commission members on it for now. So we've had a motion, a second, no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Yep. Wait, wait. Motion, Patrick, second, Christine.
Yes.
Sir. Okay, great.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I said aye, maybe. I meant to say aye. So we're closing the public hearing at this point. Um, let's go back to, uh, the oath, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, and Mitchell, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you please administer the oath to our new commission members?
Yes, and now I'm just trying to open the darn email again. I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm travel challenged at the moment. And again, huge apologies for being late. All right. If everybody would please raise their right hand, all the new folks. And I'm just gonna say the whole oath and then ask that everybody, uh, say aye do at the end, and that'll make it the simplest way we can possibly do this. The oath is as follows. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of, of, sorry. She, uh, God, I've got the historic commission one up. I'm sorry. One second.
Welcome in.
She sent me both of them. And unfortunately, that one is under the historic commission. All right, here it is. I promise everything from this moment will be much more professional. All right. Raise your right hands. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of planning commissioner of the city of Chattahoochee Hills and will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia and the charter ordinances and regulations of the city of Chattahoochee Hills. I'm not the holder of any accounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I'm not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state, which I made by the laws of state of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I will perform the duties of my office without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation this thereof. Uh, and if you so agree, please say aye.
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 Aye. Uh, welcome aboard.
Mitchell, did you say, did you say aye, Mitchell?
I did. Thank you. Yes.
Now, let the record reflect that all the, uh, members said aye.
And thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for, uh, attending and, uh, uh, attending to this. Um, gentlemen, welcome on board. Do you have your written oaths? If you could pass them up to me, please. Uh, Mitchell, you'll need to sign, uh, the, we have written oaths you will need to sign at some point.
Uh, once I, um, test negative, I'll stop in and sign that for you.
I, I missed that, Mitchell. I'm sorry. What's, no, no, do you, please.
Stay away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next item on the agenda is election of officers for the next year for the planning commission. Um, I don't think we have talked about this. Uh, we can, if you all would like to delay that till our next meeting, we can do that. Um, if you would prefer that, so perhaps we all get to know each other a little better. Um, Will, your thoughts on that? To delay it or want to proceed with it now?
I'm, I'm buying either way.
Um, I think John and you, you were.
Delay.
Delay for the next meeting, I think we can. Uh, Mitchell, is that all right with you?
That's fine. Yes, that would be great.
Okay, that way I think we can get.
Maybe vote on that for me? Since it's on the agenda?
Sure. Uh, do we have a motion to delay the election of officers until our next meeting? You guys can.
You can do it.
I move that we delay the election of officers until the next official meeting.
Mr. Hayes made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion in a sec, um, we had two seconds from Mitchell Wolf and John Crespo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mike. It's a good sketch.
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe we have any old business. We're gonna get to your thing in a minute. Um, really new business none? Do we have staff reports?
So, um, as a, has become, uh, uh, habit, I've got the the community development building permit report. Um, just so you can see the activity from last month, this report, it's presented to city council each month, and, uh, this is what went to them for this month. Um, little drop off on permits from, uh, from last year, um, twenty-three, uh, last year, seventeen, this year. Of those seventeen, four of them were new homes versus seventy a year ago. Um, but the other activities, COs and inspections are up. Um, so that reflects, um, relationship between previous activity, because those of course come late in the process. That, and then, um, I guess officially a part of the, um, staff, um, staff report, I wanted to, so I sent you all, um, some links to some things, um, documents that you'll need and, and want to refer to. Um, I put together a little bit, I just wanted to provide you a little bit of, um, uh, context, just to, to help, help you think about organizing, um, uh, the things you hear, the things we talk about.
Hey, Mike, if it's okay, let's adjourn this meeting. We'll do that as a work ethic at the end.
Okay.
And we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep Mitchell hooked in, so.
That's great. That's great. Okay.
Um, thank you for, that was it on the staffer boards? All right. Uh, I believe that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been, has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? The meeting is adjourned. Um, folks, we're gonna go into a working session. It'll be a short one, but Mike has some materials to present regarding zoning and your new duties. Um, and, uh, this will be a very, uh, high-level overview, I think.
That's right.
Correct. So Mike is, and Mitchell, are you, you still hooked in?
Yes, I am.
If you can hang on, we'll try to get you these materials after.
Thank you.
Can you, Mike, would you send these to Mitchell?
I would.
When you get a chance, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I can send them. I can send them to him. It is, we can turn the, should we turn the AC back on?
Please do. But it's a working session, so the public can certainly stay. Bye, Mr. Pete. Mr. Pete Junior.
As a grand day.
What?
As a grand day.
Oh, it's the most fun I've had in years.
What did you just say?
Well, that's true. Mr. Morton, at your convenience, go ahead.
Great. Should we wait for John? Okay, here. So the, um, the, the rate, well, so I'll go with, I should go through the map first. Um, it is basically a zoning map with a couple of other things on it. Um, I just wanted you all to have sort of the baseline of, of the zoning of the city, right? It's almost all RL, which is the light green. Um, the pink and the purple are, um, uh, the pink is, uh, mixed-use hamlet, the purple is village. Um, and then the yellowish is residential hamlet. Um, there are a couple of sort of yellowy-brown areas, um, at Rico Crossroads are right here. And then up at the very northern tip of the city, those are really just, um, future development map designations of historic crossroads areas. Um, I just included that here. So you could see each of those has, um, a single parcel in there that's zoned as historic crossroad parcel. But the rest of those, those two neighborhoods is not zoned, anything special. They are just, just, um, just rural. Um, also you see Cochranville Park, the big, the big park right in the middle. Um, just south of that is the pending rezoning for, uh, Merrill Park. So it's a proposed village. Um, it's before city council, um, hasn't had a vote yet. Um, but that was a, that was a DRI and it's just sort of, you can see it's kind of grayed out a little bit, but that's, that's that location. So you can get a picture of how things, um, how things lay out in the city. You can see that, that Saranby is kind of leggy. Um, there's the bulk of Saranby there by Atlanta Noonan Road and then, um, a short, short tendrils that stick out to the west across Watkins Road and then a big parcel that fronts, uh, Sardis Road that was just rezoned this last, or this month by council, um, with no concept plan approved. So there's no particular development approved in there, but the two hundred and three development rights that come with that property can be applied elsewhere in the, in the hamlet. Um, so anyway, just kind of an overview of, of, of the city physically, where things lay out. Um, the small paper, the, uh, the stuff on the front, these first two pages are, it's basically a, uh, table of contents for the zoning. Um, I included some of the subsections, but not all of them. Um, uh, so I wanted to give you a picture of basically what we deal with in planning commission. Um, most of the public hearings have to do with rezonings, special use permits or variances. Um, you all would be making recommendations on any of these, um, to city council for approval or not, um, with whatever conditions, um, uh, you, you, you feel are appropriate to recommend. Um, other things that we, um, see in here, uh, would include text amendments, so changes to the zoning language, make recommendations on those. Um, uh, any, uh, other planning, if there do small area plans, we have a plan for the Campbellton area. That's northern, um, brown area that was, um, adopted by council. Um, you would make a recommendation on that. The comp plan, when that comes, uh, uh, before council, when it's ready to be adopted, you make a recommendation on that. Um, and then the, the other thing that the planning commission does, um, that council actually doesn't do, um, is approve preliminary plats. So that's the next step after the concept plan. So when something's rezoned, um, uh, there's generally a concept plan that comes along with the rezoning. It can come layer, it can be modified layer. And then the preliminary plat is the first step bef- for, uh, the land development and then the, it actually gets divided into separate properties. Um, and so that is an approval that planning commission, uh, votes on. And that's the, the last, uh, it doesn't go to council from there. So, um, uh, basically you're making decision based on whether it matches the concept plan, whether it matches the zoning. It doesn't go to council from there, so, um, uh, basically you're making decision based on whether it matches the concept plan, whether it matches the zoning. Um, uh, so, um. Uh, I'll just walk through very, very briefly, very high level, um, this, uh, appendix A is unified development code, that's got zoning. Subdivisions and a number of other sections that we'll go through, um, the first art- article one, you can see I I pulled out some of the subsections in there. Um, it's more, obviously you can read through any of this you want to, but it mentions the zoning map. Establishment of zoning districts, and then the relationship to the comprehensive plan, that's the main thing, and nonconformities, those are the two main things in there that I thought maybe were relevant. Um, relationship to concert comprehensive plan basically says, um, what zoning districts can go in. Um, what parts of the future development map, which is in the comprehensive plan, so it kind of spells some of that. Some of that out, really the main limitation is that villages have to go in the village center. Um, or the preferred village area, which is around the parkway, the last page in your packet is that future development map. Comes straight out of the comprehensive plan, so it's that hatched area in the middle, um, is a preferred village area. Um, and then historic crossroads have to be in an area that's been designated as historic crossroad. Um, and then nonconformities, those are things that were once legal, but because of changes in the zoning, they're no longer legal. And it limits what is and it isn't allowed to happen with those properties, um, uh, so that can, um. Uh, we may see some stuff related to that, next is definitions, that section is just what it says, definitions for all sorts of terms used in the ordinance. Um, the signs section has its own definitions, and the uses section has their own definitions. Uh, but in general, if you're looking for, um, a defined term, it's in that article two. And next is zoning procedures, that's where it talks about what we do with rezonings, um, sections three nine and three ten. Sections three fourteen, fifteen and sixteen have to do with special permits, special use permits. They had special administrative permits are all also in there, but those are, those are, um, uh, handled by staff, and then the next section is on variances. Um, so that's where it talks about the processes for many of the things that come before the planning commission for recommendation. Next is subdivision procedures, um, uh, and that's where we lay out a number of things, including that process. I just talked about a little bit, um, when a project is rezoned to hamlet. Um, or the major subdivision process, it can actually happen in RL, but doesn't generally, because most of what happens in RL is allowed to be. Handled administratively, but but the process is an approved concept plan, which you would make a recommendation on, then get approved by city council. The next step is a preliminary plat, uh, which is approved by the planning commission. We actually have language in here that allow those to happen together, so if they match and they come to you. You recommend approval, and then it goes to city council and they approve the concept plan, the preliminary plat is approved at the same time, if it, if it matches with no. Uh, and and the concept plan goes through with no changes, so they can happen at the same time, but they are su- two distinct steps in the process. Um, preliminary plat basically lays out the lots, um, in a, say, a hamlet or a village. And then construction plans are next, so that's generally a land disturbance permit, um, uh, that's when, you know, they start turning dirt. Uh, you put stormwater and sewer and power and all that stuff in, and the roads. Um, that's all handled administratively, we have engineering review, we have fire marshal review, we have zoning review. Um, and then after that comes a final plat, again, that's an administrative process, but that's when. Uh, all of the infrastructure is in, everything you need to actually occupy those lots is in place, you can bond for some of the work, um, potentially. Um, the developer can bond for some of the work, but then the final plat is when the lot becomes real and available to market and sale. So, that's when, that's when it finally becomes real, um, so that goes through some of that process. Um, next is general provisions, general provisions are technically, um, not zoning, it's stuff that applies generally throughout the city. Um, you see at the very top of the next space, I boxed in all the stuff related to open space, several sections related to open space, open space is a big deal here. Um, uh, because it is, um, uh, the development drives the preservation of land, right? The goal is to preserve seventy percent, uh, or more of the city in its current rural state, and only develop a footprint of about thirty percent. And so, um, uh, the open space is how that works at hamlets, um, uh, in villages. Uh, the open space is generally created offsite. By purchasing transferable development rights from other property owners in the city, although some of that can be, there is a, some small open space requirement onsite. Um, the next section right below that box is required civic space, so five percent of each of these sites is civic space, that space that gets. Um, uh, uh, is allowed to be used, so the open space, you don't have to allow anyone on the open space, it can be leased out to farmers. Um, it doesn't have to be, um, usable by the general public, civic space generally is usable by the, by the general public. They can include things like fire stations and things like that as well, um, and then the required buffers and screens, and that's important here as well. Villages, uh, and hamlets, um, are intended to be buffered, so they can't be seen from the right away or from neighboring properties. Um, there are some exceptions in there, so there are some opportunities for buffer windows, things like that, but, uh, but in general, things are supposed to be buffered away. Um, it also includes some other general things like fences, um, uh, the night sky ordinances in there, um, and a few other things. Um, again, you're welcome to, um, look at that, next section is zoning distance, that's districts, that's where we lay out what the districts are. And what the gen- what generally is allowed to happen, and then what the densities are, relationship between commercial and residential uses and in those districts, things like that. Um, and then the uses section, um, those four, um, that's, uh, that's probably the section I'm, uh, referring to the most. Um, definitions of the various uses, the next section permitted uses is a use table, says what is and isn't allowed in various districts. Um, and it can be on that table, it could be marked as, um, this use is not allowed at all. This use is, um, automatically allowed, basically automatically allowed. Um, or is allowed only by special permit, either an administrative per- special administrative permit or special use permit. Um, and so that's, um, that's where you go to find out what, um, uh, whether you need to go back to city council for approval, or whether you can just. Um, apply for your business license and 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 building permitting. Um, and then the next section is on accessory uses, that's the section we were working in this evening, right, has, um, the. Size limits on accessory dwellings, has locations of accessory structures and things like that, and then finally, section seven four, there is supplemental use provisions. That is, um, uh, a special set of rules that apply only to specific uses, so not all uses have them. Um, some do, and that's where those are laid out, um, the next section is signs, um, we're actually hoping to make some changes, we may see that come in here. Um, a revision of the sign ordinance that you'll, um, be making, um, recommendations on, um. The next two have to do with telecommunications structures, small cell facilities, which is really about the five G stuff mostly. Um, telecommunications towers is about the big towers, um, and then subdivisions, we get into, um, uh, things like farmettes and family lot provisions. Um, right now in the rural district, twenty acres is the smallest lot you can create unless. The family owned the property when we became a city and they're transferring any lots created to a certain, um, uh, defined subset of. Fam- close-ish family members, um, so that's all in there, then finally thoroughfares, um. Uh, in a development, how, how are thoroughfares designed? Um, transfer of development rights, the second to the last one is a very big one, um, I wasn't planning on going into any detail there, but basically it allows. Uh, people in the rural area to sell the development rights off their property in exchange for permanently protecting it. And then those are, development rights can get applied in a hamlet or a village in order to add density. Um, it's the main mechanism for, um, preservation, we don't have a, a, an active T D R market right now. Uh, just because we don't have the demand for it, we're hoping that'll come along, and then finally, some s- information on stormwater infrastructure, so. It's kind of a, a general walkthrough, what's in the unified development code, um. The next page is something I was asked to put together by a council member, it's just the difference between special use permits and variances. Um, you can read it on your own, I don't need to go into that, but there is a lot of misunderstanding, at least among the public. On, uh, what those are, we get applications for special use permits, and people are asking why you're allowing people to break the rules. A special use permit is not breaking the rules, it's just an additional layer of review for something that's, um, within the rules. Whereas a variances, I wouldn't want to use the word breaking, but you're allowing people to do something that's otherwise not allowed, and you can't get a variance for anything, you can't get it, uh. A variance for uses to allow a use that's not allowed in that zoning dis- district, and you can't get a variance for additional density. That's not allowed in the zoning district, so only certain things can be varied. Um, the next one, um, probably won't have to deal with much, but it is related to the land development, chapter fourteen in the city code. Um, has things like, um, flood plain and storm water protection and the tree preservation ordinance, you may want to be familiar with some of that. Um, sometimes those things come up, in fact, we did just have a, uh, stream buffer variance that came through for recommendation, it's got its own set of, uh, review criteria. And, uh, standards for how that proceeds, but, uh, that's out of chapter fourteen, so that does come before us, and then again, the future development map right out of the con. Uh, the comp plan, um, just thought you should have a copy of that, so that's it, I just wanted to sort of provide a framework. Um, for when things come in front of you, you know, where you can find them, how these things kind of relate to each other, I really didn't get into that very much, but. Again, just wanted to give kind of a thirty thousand, forty thousand foot view of, uh, uh, of some of the rules.
Um, thank you, Mike, I think you and the mayor are suggesting that we have a working session at some point. Um, and I don't mean to cut off questions or anything, and all you may have, Mike, uh, you may ask Mike any questions you want at any time. I I do a word of caution, we as the commission are subject to the Open Meetings Act in Georgia. And the quorum we now have is four, and so anytime four commission members get together to talk substantively about. About anything that is coming up before the commission, it's gotta be a public hearing, gotta be a public meeting. Um, it can't be done in somebody's backyard, can't be done on, uh, in a, in a restaurant or anything like that, it's gotta be called at a public meeting. And that also applies to communications, so you'll hear more about this, but sending out a, a. An email to all the planning commission members about a topic that's coming up in front of the commission members. Is not what we're supposed to do, uh, and you're not supposed to do that, so please adhere to that, there'll be, you'll hear more about this, but just as. In the interim, as a word of caution, i- it's, it's frustrating, we all want to just get together and sit and talk things through. But that's not what the public meeting and public hearing process is about, we're supposed to listen to the public and we're supposed to make our decisions at that point, so. Please be cautious about that, and and so by no means do you want to go sending blanket emails about substantive issues that are coming up. Um, or, uh, or communications, or even divide them up, you don't wanna, you don't wanna just try to evade it either, so. Um, it doesn't mean you can't talk, can't talk to individuals, can't do that sort of thing, share some thoughts, but you gotta be very careful about the quorum requirements here, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, you guys were supposed to bring snacks, wasn't that right? No, I'm saying, it's a joke, it's a joke. Um, thank you, any questions at this point?
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Welcome, happy to have you all aboard.
Thank you.
Second bad.
So, so groups of four, no go.
The three of.
So, three's okay.
Three's okay, three's company, got it, we're good. And and don't respond to the group email, respond individually if necessary.
I I think so, and I think frankly, if you're making substantive decisions before the public meeting. I'd hold off on that, you can have your opinions, everybody's got their opinions, but I wouldn't be making decisions about anything, even in. In your own mind until, until you give the public the, the courtesy of hearing from, and substantive hearing from them, so it's, it's an important process. Christine, I'm sorry, did you have something you wanted to say on that? Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Morton, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Mitchell?
Thank you very much.
To me, I hope you get better soon, Mitchell.
So do I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm on the mend, I'm gonna be okay.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right.